Good afternoon, and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Commission Meeting for Tuesday, October 29th, 2019. I am Commissioner John Hutchings, and to my right is Commissioner Ty Mensah. To his right is La Bonita Boomer, clerk of the board. I'll back up because Commissioner Gary Edwards has an excused absence today. And to La Bonita's right is the county manager, Ramiro Chavez, and to his right is Assistant County Manager, Finance Director, Robin Campbell. So, welcome. And with that, the meeting is called to order, and I would ask Commissioner Mensah to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And then I'll look for approval of today's agenda.
Move to approve.
I'll second that. It's been moved to approve today's agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. And we are not doing that one. So, we move right into the presentations. And the first one is introduction of new commissioners' office employee.
Yes. Thank you, commissioners. I may ask Ms. Katie Johnson to come to the podium. It is truly my pleasure to introduce Katie Johnson as the executive, new executive assistant to the county manager. She joins the commissioner's office as of two weeks ago, I believe. She comes to us from the attorney general's office, where she spent the last three years in a couple of roles, one as the office assistant, and also as a legal assistant, one and two, providing assistance to attorneys. Katie grew up in Thurston County with her mom, grandma, and grandpa, who he is a 95-year-old WWII veteran.
Wow.
Currently, she resides in Shelton. She stays, lives with her lover, the love of her life, and two dogs.
And two dogs.
She enjoys a passion for scuba diving, underwater photography, fishing, gardening, hiking, and he truly enjoys all the beautiful outdoors in the state of Washington. Welcome, Katie.
Thank you.
Wow, welcome, Katie.
Thank you. I'm extremely excited to have had this opportunity, and I'm thrilled to be working in Thurston County, where I grew up, and I look forward to the next year and growing as an individual, working with everybody here. So, thank you.
Any questions or comments?
No, we've made a great first impression the last couple of weeks, and we're glad to have you aboard.
Thank you.
I would agree with that, but I have a question. Where's the best place to scuba dive that you have been to?
Hood Canal so far, but I hear there are a lot of wonderful places in San Juans, which we've been to, and also in B.C., Canada, too. So...
Wow.
Yeah. Very cold.
It's an impressive resume, too. So, welcome. And you have made a heck of an impression in just a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, that already takes us to the item number one on the agenda, the opportunity for the public to address the board. So, I'll go through some guidelines. And number one, I would ask, if you haven't already, please silence your phones. And you watching at home, you don't have to silence your phone, but if you want to, you can. This is your opportunity for the public to address the board, so we don't engage in answer, question and answer, debate, discussion, that type of stuff. We just listen, take notes. Staff takes notes, and we follow up as needed, required. Boards that do not respond, okay. Public, the speakers are limited to a total of three minutes to address the board. And La Bonita Boomer has the remote for the timer. It shows three minutes. When it clicks down to zero, you'll hear a chime, and that indicates your time is up. Your time cannot be donated to another person. And the board reserves the right to restrict a person's opportunity to address the board for a good cause. No comments that allude or offensive to a reasonable person. Please be respectful. No outbursts of any kind, no comments that are commercial in nature, such as a promotion for a for-profit business. All materials that are provided to the county may be considered public record, subject to public records release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, chapters 42.56 of the RCW. And remarks about pending land use permits or similar matters that could eventually come before the board wouldn't be appropriate either. Thank you very much. When I call you up, please introduce yourself for the record, and about where you live in the county. And I will call up the person that's signed up on the list first, then I'll call out the second name, so the next one on deck knows they're ready to go. And so, with that, we'll start with Jerry Dirker, followed by Kate Berry.
Good afternoon. My name is Jerry Dirker. I live out in Cooper Point. I believe Ramero has a couple of copies for you of this. This is the complaint that I had refiled with the Public Disclosure Commission that includes you and others and stuff. So, I needed to let you know that there is one, and this does include a copy of the Shared Legislative Partnership Agenda contract and stuff, which shows that you guys are a part of it and stuff. So, I thought you should have that and stuff. Ramero's got three copies, one for each one of you.
Yeah, you bring it up, Jerry. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you. Two, I was talking about conflicts of interest and stuff like that in the last few days, in the last few times I've been here. And I talked about appearance of fairness doctrine, conflicts of interest. Well, this is a conflict of interest that's fairly well-known right at the moment. Amazon, derided by Trump, loses huge Pentagon contract in that it talks about how the new Defense Secretary, Mark Esper, first wanted to take several months to review the issue about who was going to get the contract, then a few days ago recused himself from the bidding because his son worked for IBM. And Price Floyd, a former head of the Public Affairs at the Pentagon, who consulted briefly for Amazon, said he thought that Trump's vocal criticism of Amazon itself would give ample grounds to protest the award to Microsoft. The problem with having conflicts of interest, such as a Chamber of Commerce membership, et cetera, partnership in this case, as well as memberships, that makes it so that any awards of bids or for goods or services that you do, that's a conflict of interest, okay? And frankly, almost everybody you guys work with is Chamber of Commerce member that you get goods and services from, when you do for the public. That's a pretty serious problem. And there's a lot of others that are linked to that. One of the other problems that deals with that is that there's an, this is a recent flyer from another campaign on another place, and it has a whole bunch of Thurston County executives on it. Thurston County prosecutor, Thurston County clerk, Thurston County assessor, Thurston County treasurer, Thurston County sheriff, all of which have given endorsements using their Thurston County positions, okay? Well, if you just get ahold of the Municipal Resource and Service Center's website, they will let you know that you can give endorsements as an elected official, but you have to actually do them as a member of the public, and you have to say so in the thing. None of them are there. And so, Thurston County's probably going to get bipped on this from me, and maybe on this one, too. So, figured I'd let you know. You guys have a good day. Maybe you can clean that up. Have a good day.
Kate Berry, followed by John Pettit. Good afternoon.
My name is Kate Berry, and I live in Lacey, Washington. Commissioners, on October 20th, I sent my feedback on the Thurston County Homeless Crisis Response Plan to Keely Marinow, and on the morning of the 21st, I sent each one of you a copy. I'm sure Gary will hear that later. It was seven pages, single-spaced, and that should tell you that I'm not impressed with this plan whatsoever. I don't believe you can even call it a plan. It is an 85-page document filled with buzzwords, unsupportable assumptions, conjecture, few verifiable facts, statistics that clearly show failure, and five objectives with 77 strategies that are heavily weighted toward increasing personnel and administrative activities. The absence of any financial accountability in this plan is shameful. The county has already spent close to $50 million of taxpayers' money over the last 13 years, and you have absolutely nothing to show for it. There was no SWOT analysis included in this plan that would not only show the extraordinary system failures you've overseen, but it would give your employers, the taxpayers of Thurston County, some indication that someone in this organization knows what is truly going on. The idea that you plan to repeat the failures of the past and do so with taxpayers' money is a failure on your part as commissioners, to act in a fiscally responsible manner. You should be ashamed of yourselves for signing your names to a colossal waste of taxpayers' money that does nothing to ameliorate the root causes of homelessness and does nothing to address the very real concerns residents of Thurston County have with the exponential rise in lawlessness under your watch. What makes this worse is that your plan holds up the response of Olympia as some kind of beacon of success. If Olympia is your beacon of success, then we're all doomed. Lastly, I'm deeply troubled by your lack of response to my feedback. You work for the taxpayers of Thurston County, yet you ignored me. You have this ineffective and inefficient plan on your agenda today, and I expect you're going to approve it, you're going to rubber-stamp it, without the benefit of the thoughtful feedback given to you by your constituents. I'm deeply disappointed in that. And I realize it's only been a little more than a week since the plan was posted on your website, but that was all the time I had to respond, and yet I was able to give you seven pages of single-spaced comments, which I thought I had done quite methodically, in hopes that you would respond, and you didn't. It makes me very disappointed as a taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you. John Pettit, and then followed by Barbara Chambers.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm John Pettit. I live out by Rich Rod. And I thought I was tough on you guys sometimes. Very nice job. I wanted to make a couple of comments on a couple of different things. One is, I see one of your agenda items is to put a piece of property up for sale on Cooper Point Road. I realize you're planning on putting it up at a bidding price, starting at $28,000. The good news is, is I already have one of my associates that'll be posting as soon as it comes up, at least a $50,000 bid on it, because putting it at $28,000 is just absolutely ridiculous, and it appears to be a great piece of property. It should easily bring in good revenue. A secondary issue that I want to deal with has to do with something which I'm bringing, and I'm going to actually have an opportunity to meet with one of the commissioners on and have a talk about. I suggested you watch a video from November 29th, 2018. It's a 10-minute video. And I did not really believe what I was watching. It looked kind of like forest stooges going through a process to have a meeting in which they, quite honestly, it was, every element of it indicates it was an illegal meeting. There's no minutes for the meeting. There's no agenda for the meeting, and it lacked every single culture. The trouble is, that exact meeting was the one that was to certify property taxes for 2019. And when that meeting becomes void, you would have a couple options to actually certify legally in a legal meeting, and be able to obtain the tax rate that would be, or the dollar figure for 2018. Or, and then you'd only have to refund about 2.2 million to the public for excess amounts that you have levied between the two years. Or, you can choose to fight it and refund $75 million plus. That'll be a choice you guys got to decide. But illegal meetings have to stop. Now, the only other thing which I want to mention to you is, I was glad to hear that Commissioner Mensah, and by the way, Mr. Mensah was not involved in that previous meeting. I just want that for the record. Okay. My other thing which I wanted to address has, once again, to do with the courthouse issue, which appears to be building a courthouse, coming back up on the issue to seek about getting a vote. While I will continue to be on an adversarial position on that, I do appreciate Mr. Mensah suggesting that it would be better that we could save money, and would be better to move it over to a more significant election. The appropriate one would be the general election in November, because the election for a primary doesn't fit within the qualifications of RCWs. The second part is, you cannot use bonds for doing maintenance on county facilities. You can do bonds for capital improvements, but the idea of using bonds is ridiculous. We're still paying bonds on buildings we sold years ago. We need to get our finances in order. Thank you.
All right, Barbara Chambers, followed by Jack Grimes.
Good afternoon, all. My name is Barbara Chambers. I live on Johnson Point Road Northeast, out in Thurston County. And I am here also to address the draft, well, maybe not a draft anymore, I don't know, the Homeless Crisis Response Plan. I did submit these exact comments on October 22nd, before the deadline, to Keely Marinow, and also to all of the board of county commissioners. So, I'm just going to read this for the record. It said, first of all, "Thank you for allowing the citizens of Thurston County to review and comment on the latest version of the Thurston County Homeless Crisis Response Plan for 2019 through 2024." I was going to comment page by page and section by section, but as I read through the draft, it became clear to me that the document is chock-full of assumptions, emotions, factors that have nothing to do with equality implemented in a fair manner, if implemented in a fair manner, unbelievable amounts of fluff, an infinitum of acronyms, and no clear resolutions to the homeless crisis that this county now faces. The plan does absolutely nothing to address the root cause of homelessness, nor does it hold the recipients and/or beneficiaries of the free services accountable. Recipients and beneficiaries must be willing to jointly work with the county and cities to help themselves out of homelessness. The plan is a perpetual handing out of social services and housing that have become an undue burden on the taxpayers, and, in my opinion, a misuse of federal funds and grant programs. The only results to date are the establishment and hiring of numerous positions throughout the county to manage and administer this homeless crisis. I see no evidence that the millions of dollars spent to date in Thurston County have resulted in any mitigation of the homeless crisis. In fact, your plan indicates that the homelessness has and will continue to increase. I understand that the federal system mandates that federal funds be spent in a manner that ensures equitable distribution to all impacted parties. Separating out race and sexual orientation in this plan has nothing to do with addressing homelessness as a whole in our community. We should ensure that all outreach and services provided by any governmental agency are delivered to everyone in an equitable manner, not showing any preference or bringing attention to any one group. Regarding the children between ages 0 to 17 years of age, any homeless child under the age of 18 that does not have parents or that refuses to return home or are no longer welcome at home should be in the custody of Children's Services. In other words, they should not be part of the homeless plan. Anyone over the age of 18 should be treated as an adult because they are legal adults. In general, for any plan to be successful, there must be measurable outcomes in place, not only to the recipients of governmental funding, such as a nonprofit organization, but also to the recipients and beneficiaries of public services and shelter facilities. These measurable outcomes must be reported regularly to ensure the objective of moving people out of homelessness are met. If this is not your objective, then stop what you're doing and return all funding to the respective sources.
Thank you. Jack Grimes, followed by Matthew Adams.
Thank you, commissioners, for another opportunity to address the board. My name is Jack Grimes. I live on 76th Avenue Northeast, and I'm here basically to address the ordinance change, or the proposed ordinance change for the property taxes. I do appreciate how hard you work and the successes that you've had, but this is, this and others need more improvement and study from you. This property tax change should not be approved by the residents of Thurston County. If they will look at it closely, it's a property tax increase that will continue to increase every year for 25 years, and most of us can afford that additional expense. Currently, Washington, or Thurston County, is seventh of the 39 counties in Washington State for the property tax assessed. Thurston County is in the top 10% of all counties in the United States. The residents of Thurston County should also not be required to pay for a special election. This should be on a general election date, which would minimize the cost of the county, and the funds can be better used to solve the problem, which is refurbish the courthouse and/or new facilities. The information on the county website about this ordinance change is biased and is less than honest. There appears to be self-serving to the preparers, and all of the positive things that are mentioned, and nothing about some of the hard facts that are associated with it that don't shine a bright light on it in favor. The increases, this increase, if passed, will affect all of us, even people renting, and every one of us will be paying more to be able to live in our existing homes, which some of us have been in 40-plus years. The ordinance in itself also, if it increases the taxes to the people that live in their homes, some people will be forced out, which adds to your homeless crisis that you're also trying to address. The situation is a challenge for people to pay bills now. This will only add to those challenges. I would like to think that you are all capable of putting together a balanced budget that will work without having to go to tax increases to do this. The U.S. commissioners do have an obligation to provide public facilities for the county, et cetera, but this is not the way. If this does go to vote and is passed, there should be better language that restricts the usage. There should be a dedicated fund that would only be for buildings and renovations, and any excess that might be collected should put into a reserve account to pay for things like this going forward, which was not done by the previous commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Adams, followed by Sharon Coombs.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Matthew Adams. My wife and I, Andrea, moved here from Colorado Springs about six months ago, sight unseen. We bought a home in Boston Harbor. We were drawn by the natural beauty of the state, had never been here before, but truly fell in love with Olympia and decided we want to call this place home. However, since we've been here, we have just been appalled by the homeless situation in Olympia. It's obvious that this plan seeks to continue what has obviously been a failure in the past. We do believe that your intentions are noble, that you want to help people that are in need of help, but it also seems like a failure to admit that a plan has failed, or a refusal to admit that a plan has failed, and that you refuse to try a different action. We're baffled by the fact that, as far as we can tell, the crimes that many of these people commit, vagrancy, vandalism, drug use, urination and defecation in public places, as far as we know, those are still against the law. Yet, this plan intends to reward bad behavior by handing out free housing. Rewarding bad behavior only encourages more bad behavior. We don't understand why cancer treatment isn't free, or insulin isn't free, but you can get drugs for can get drugs for free, even though they're illegal. This plan makes no sense to us as outsiders. We have seen homelessness on a much smaller scale where we're from, and we come here to a place where supposedly it's a safe haven, and all it does is invite criminal activity. We think that you need to go back to the drawing board. It's hard to top the comments of the ladies that have spoken before me, but clearly, this plan is a failure, a repeated failure of what you've tried in the past that hasn't worked and will continue to not work. We look forward to hearing your new plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Koontz, followed by Sue Danver.
Well, that was a surprise. Hi, my name's Sharon Koontz with Friends of Rocky Prairie. Couple of random thoughts today. Last week, with that terrible accident on I-5, South County residents got a hint of what traffic would be like if the massive logistics center were to be built down near Millisavania State Park. We've talked about in front of you a couple of times, both at the hearing and here, about how truck drivers take alternate routes when there's a jam. And one clever guy, I'm sure you heard about him, decided he'd get off the freeway a little further south than everybody else and outsmart everyone on Old 99, and didn't pay attention to the fact that the trestle was too short for him and drove away with an empty, with an open container rather than a closed one, and quote, "managed to close the entire Highway 99 for a really long time." Others looked for more creative ways for alternate, alternate routes, and they went zooming around Little Rock and Case Roads. People called us, called Friends of Rocky Prairie, and said, "Is this what we were talking about? We have people driving these windy country roads at high speeds. One trucker missed a corner completely, and a gentleman called me and said, 'Yeah, took out a third of my front yard, thank you very much, this lawn is wiped out.'" Another had a big wreck when he, again, too, was going way too fast, missed a curve, dumped his lumber all over the yards, two yards in a ditch. I got the thrill of driving from Trosper to Millisavania State Park in longer than it would have taken me to walk, literally, it was over an hour and a half. So that's one issue that we've raised before, and this was a real wake-up call to the neighbors out there, and I just wanted you to be aware of it, too, if you weren't, but I'm sure you've heard most of it. Also, on the hearing, at the hearing on the 16th, and this is a completely different subject, except that it's still North Point, our North Point representative got in an argument with, I think it was the speaker named Ajai, I'm not sure how he pronounced his name, and he said it wasn't fair for Friends of Rocky Prairie and others to call the North Point's plan a multimodal center, since the train tracks out there need a lot of repairs right now, so there wouldn't be any trains. Seriously, when the president of North Point came to the Port of Tacoma meeting to discuss their purchase and sale agreement the day they were finalizing it, he said they were in partnership with Burlington Northern Railroad. Now, that would be a clue that trains are going to be involved, I think. North Point's been at best disingenuous about their plans all along, changing their story, depending on whom they're speaking to, and committing nothing important to writing, and that could then be part of the public record. And this holds true for their application for the so-called warehouses out by Millisavania. They say they don't have a specific plan for their application for a rezon, but all three Commissioners have told me that, yes, indeed, you saw their plans. So that puts a big flag up to me that these people are not to be trusted around here. I met with them also. They showed me different plans than what they showed you, which I thought was interesting. Gosh, I hate that thing, sorry. This company isn't reliable. It does not open with the public, and alarm bells should go off, and I hope they do with you folks. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sue Danver.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Sue Danver, and I'm with Black Hills Audubon Society. I've been on their Conservation Committee since 2001. Besides its interest in birds, Black Hills Audubon advocates for the protection of high-quality and/or rare wildlife habitat and its species. I'm here today to announce that we have joined the Friends of Rocky Prairie Coalition. Of import, Forbes has a resolution that asks that you reject the request of the rezon of the Port of Tacoma property from rural to industrial. Okay, Black Hills has been advocating for the Port of Tacoma property since 2003 to make it a wildlife area or to protect it from development. So, Black Hills also made its own resolution. We support the Friends of Rocky Prairie resolution, but we made our own with specific details. Whereas, a 745-acre Maytown site, also known as Rocky Prairie, owned by the Port of Tacoma, is ecologically fragile and has rare prairie habitat, several at-risk species in many critical areas, whereas Thurston County spent over two years studying the site before recommending it to be downside to a rural residential, one house per 20 acres. And whereas Maytown's site abuts a state fish and wildlife preserve with at least six endangered species, threatened or endangered, and whereas the Maytown property, 745 acres, is part of an extensive, rare and valuable wildlife corridor for animal movement between Rocky Prairie, that's 810 acres, Millisavania Park, which is 842 acres, and the McIntosh Family Tree, 1,200 acres farm, Wolf Haven, and other Rocky Prairie natural areas. Whereas, and this is the important one for Audubon, whereas an industrial zoning designation at Maytown Site is not compatible with wildlife and citizens' water needs because development would alter the natural hydrological cycle, degrade water quality, threaten species habitat, and endanger drinking water supply wells. Therefore, be it resolved that Black Hills Audubon Society hereby requests that Thurston County Commissioners retain the current appropriate zoning for the site, which is rural residential 120, rather than amending the comprehensive plan to change the zoning to rural resource Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. That exhausts the list of folks that have signed up. However, if you would like to address the Board, and you haven't already spoken, you're welcome to come up now at this time. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Peggy Madsen, and I live in the Ovation Oaktree Community. I am new to this area, having moved here from Los Angeles, and along with the gentleman from Colorado, I am appalled by how you are handling the burgeoning homeless problem here. Now, I come from Los Angeles, where there are no words to describe that problem. However, here, we're on the cusp of what can explode into a disaster. As residents, we are currently forced to live amongst the squalor of individuals who choose homelessness. There are individual tasks, and there are collective tasks. The individual tasks are up to every single person to solve. How do I feed myself? How do I house myself? The collective tasks are to the government, providing public safety, our police officers, our firefighters, providing our infrastructure. These are the things that I have unfortunately witnessed. The incredible lawlessness that I see in the homeless encampments, the tents, the absolutely open drug dealing. It is ridiculous. Now, listen, I completely understand that there are individuals who fall into homelessness through no fault of their own. Those are the people we should be focusing on. Those who elect homelessness as opposed to taking care of their individual tasks have to be held to following the law. And the problem I see with this plan is it has a victimology spread throughout the plan. And especially bothered by trauma-involved planning. I would like you to find 10% of the population who have not experienced a trauma in their life. We've all experienced trauma. Suck it up, figure it out, move on. The other problem is, there's not enough focus on jobs and the requirement to actually be engaged in working. You know, look, I've engaged with a lot of homeless people who simply just want to be stoned. That's not up to the government and fellow citizens to support that choice, that lifestyle choice. The other point is, and many people before me have made it, is what we are doing is a failure, and it is a very high cost to government services. Other things are going ignored because we're pouring money into a failed program. The other issue that deeply disturbed me is on your data collection, that how many of the individuals during the pit self-identify what their cause of homelessness is? Really? Again, with the victimology. Would you like me to stand here and list all of the problems that I have in my personal life and blame other people? Sure. Drill down and find out what the real issue, why that individual is homeless, starting with drug tests. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the Board that has not spoken? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Margie Martin. I live on Zangle Road, and it would be helpful to my family as well as some of my neighbors if some of the meetings could be held in the evening, so those of us that work have an opportunity to be involved. The homelessness is just a huge problem in the county, and it's just impossible for many people to be off work at this time of the day. And the parking is horrible. Thanks.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Meg Martin, and I am the Executive Director of Interfaith Works. I'm someone who worked on this plan. I want to thank everybody who is here today to talk and share concerns many of you have seen before in different places, so thank you for that. I want to just express that this is an extremely complex issue, one of the most complex issues of our time and of the century for our country to face. And many of the, all in fact, of the strategies that you have before you have been gathered through evidence-based data that spans over decades, has been gathered from examples of other communities that have seen successes, that have seen major changes in their health and prosperity of their entire community by implementing many of these plans. And I want to just encourage everyone, and I mean this from all sides of the debate, I often talk about this debate as sort of a horseshoe, where typically, the ends from where people are coming from are much closer. And I think that when I hear that some of the concerns today are that this plan doesn't show how we're going to get people off the streets and out of homelessness, I want to reassure everyone and invite you to come talk with me, come talk with other folks that have written this plan, about how that is the only goal that we're trying to go for, is putting ourselves out of a job and making sure that this issue is eradicated in our community in any way possible. And we did everything that we could to try to look at the most effective and cost-efficient ways to do that. Thank you for consideration of this. I also do want to add that many of the folks that have been involved in this plan, and this feels a little bit vulnerable and scary to say, myself included, come from drug addiction, come from extreme poverty, come from serious mental illness. And we were given a chance, we were given the opportunities that we needed, many of which are being suggested to be implemented in this plan, in order to better ourselves and better our community. And so, I hope, my hope is that we can all start to recognize where our common efforts lie and find productive ways to get to those goals. And that's what I'd like to say today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come and address the Board? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name's Crystal Burningham, and I'm in Hawks Prairie.
Oh, here, here. Crystal, what's the last name?
Burningham.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate everyone that has worked diligently on this and brought their insights. Some things that I wanted to point out in it is, there are a lot of people that were not included, including the public, in these meetings. The homeless coordinator met with, this is on page nine, the homeless coordinator met with key city officials from Olympia Staff Weekly. I kind of wanted to know who the key staff was, why not the rest of the cities, why weren't they involved, and where were their voices, and where were the voices of the citizens? I think it's important to have a balanced approach. And going over this 85-page document, there's a lot of political correctness, and there's nobody addressing the issue head-on, which I believe is drug-induced homelessness, lack of accountability and sustainability. If I were to make an investment, and you told me that there would be a 50% chance it would fail, I probably would really think about making that investment again. And the reason why I bring this up is, on page 33 and 11, you have written that rapid rehousing has a 54% chance of failure rate. The permanent housing has a 33% chance of failure rate, meaning they are housed and they go back to homelessness. And then also for the supportive housing, also 50% of those go back to homelessness. Why are they going back? Do they not have tools in place to help them with finances and budget and meal planning? Is a drug addiction that they keep sliding backwards? When they are given these tools, why are 50% backsliding? Why is this happening? I have read through a lot of nationwide statistics on what has worked and what hasn't. Unfortunately, when the person doesn't do their own due diligence, it will always fail. If you keep spoon-feeding people and not holding the bar high, and you set it so low that they're going to trip over it, they will, every single time. So I urge you to please go back to the drawing board and come up with better solutions than this 85-page document. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the Board? Anyone? Anyone? All right, thank you. That takes us to Agenda Item Number Two, County Manager's Update.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Let me give you a little bit of a small report from the different departments' appointed directors. From the Office of Public Defense, it was in the last month, 156 adult felony cases was assigned to this group. So on the last three quarters of 2019, that brings to 1,664 cases assigned to the Office of Public Defense. That is just about 2% increases in cases compared to the same period in 2018. No? Is this working?
I think we need to get it away from here.
It's not on. So let me see if I can speak louder. Okay. What I just stated is the number of increased cases on the Office of Public Defense, which is for, through the third quarter of 2018, they had a total of 1,664 cases, which is a 2% increase on the same period in 2018. Moving on to Public Works, staff from Public Works accepted the prestigious Estorship Award from the International Conference on Ecology and Transportation for the Fish Passage Program. The only other group to receive this award was from South Africa. This is a highly recognized group, meaning this conference, the facilities, an international conference every other year, and this year just happened to be hosted in Sacramento, California. Forty-two estates participated on this event, as well as 19 different nations. Related to the community planning and economic development, overall, we have received through, in September 2019, 340 applications. That is an increase from 313 applications in 2018. Emergency Services hosted the annual Thurston County Prepartness Exposition at Peter G. Smith Elementary School on September 28. 425 people attended, where they received information about disaster preparedness hazards in Thurston County. in September 2019, 340 applications. That is an increase from 313 applications in 2018. Emergency Services hosted the annual Thurston County Preparedness Exposition at Peter G. Smith Elementary School on September 28. 425 people attended, where they received information about disaster preparedness, hazards in Thurston County, emergency kids at work and at home, and many other activities. The attendance at the 2019 Expo was exceeded from the same event in 2018, which we had 300 citizens attending the same event. Public Health and Social Services, the Development, the Mental Disabilities Program released a request for proposals for provisions of services amounting to $375,000 in Thurston County and $95,000 in Mason County to provide assistance in, to developmental disabilities citizens in the county. Central Services now under the preview of the Assistant County Manager, the Budget Office published the Commissioner's preliminary 2019-2020 mid-year adjustment. You held a public hearing on October 7 at 5:30, and you will be considering passing the budget, major budget adjustment for 2020 next week during your normal board meeting. Human Resources, they have posted 23 recruitments in August 2019. It is an increase of, from 16 in the same period in 2018. We receive a total of, during the same period, a total of 665 job applications. That is an increase from August 2018, which received 650. We have 14 new hires in 2018 in August, as opposed to 19 in 2018 in August. Information Technology, that's the new department. We have received nine proposals to the Enterprise Resource Planning application, which is, it was released in 2018. The evaluation team is going through the process of assessing all the proposals, and I believe right now they have selected a top-three firms, and they're going through formal demonstrations of their product. Pretrial Services, they have a total assigned cases through December, September 2019 of 2,645. Out of those, they have interview reports of 2,456 cases, and non-interview reports And that concludes my report, unless you have any questions. And I will try to do this in a monthly basis at the end of every month.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
No.
Comments? Nope, me neither. That takes us to Agenda Item Number Three, Consent Items A, B, and C.
I move to approve Consent Items Three, A, B, and C, as reflected on our October 29th agenda.
I second that. Is the move and seconded to approve Consent Items A, B, and C? Any further discussion on those?
No.
Nope. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Department Item Number Four, Public Health and Social Services, Thurston County Homeless Crisis Response Plan Adoption. And we've got our homeless and affordable housing coordinator, Keely Marino, and Derek Harris.
Thank you, and good afternoon. First of all, I'd like to thank all those who made comments publicly for their thoughtfulness and for coming out and speaking on such a complex and growing and impactful issue. Before I move into just describing a little bit about the process, I wanted to introduce you to Derek Harris, who's the Chief Executive Officer of Community Youth Services, and also he chairs the, our local continuum of care, which is the homeless housing hub. And I invited him to speak a little bit about the approval process.
Great, thank you, Commissioners. So again, my name is Derek Harris, and I serve as the CEO for Community Youth Services, organization that has been working with youth at risk for over 50 years in our community. In my role as the Chair of the Local Continuum of Care, which is called the Homeless Housing Hub, we have a three-fold responsibility of working as an action team for the Housing Action Team of Thurston Thrives, for acting as our local continuum of care for federal balance of state funds that come from the federal government to this community, as well as being part of the asset-building coalition of Thurston County. Within those subgroups, the Homeless Housing Hub has over 50 members that represent our schools, our libraries, our faith-based communities, our social service providers, our shelter providers, our housing providers, our housing authority, and our jurisdictions. Through that group, we give final approval of the five-year plan to move forward to the county commissioners for approval and then, and beyond. One of our, as being a sub-action group for the Housing Action Team, we have a larger group of representation at the Housing Action Team in our county that also represents all jurisdictions from Thurston County, and they've given a thumbs up of approval in moving this plan forward. One of the things that I want to state is that by following through this five-year plan, we're meeting some of our goals and guidelines, not only that we've established as a community to help end and prevent homelessness, but we're also doing our due diligence and following the guidelines of our requirements as a county to be able to move forward so that we can bring those matched federal dollars into our community. We bring in over, well, we bring in over a million in federal funds into Thurston County to help combat homelessness through those activities. And all the other social service providers in our community are also matching by state and federal funds bringing in to help support the county funds. So by your approval and adoption of this moving forward today, we're meeting our due diligence to our community, as well as bringing in additional resources into our community. So I thank you for that. And I will say on a side note, in being a part of previous plan creation and adoption, that this has been the most thorough and comprehensive activity that I've seen since we've been doing this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
Before you leave, Derek, you hinted at it or alluded to it, but can you spell out the sort of connection between this plan and the state and federal money and the state requirements? If we didn't do this plan, we just said, no, too hard to do, what would be the result? Or what is the connection?
We could be, we could be in non-compliance for our state CHD consolidated homeless grant funds, as well as our HUD-funded dollars. These are all requirements as part of our applications to be able to draw and receive funds coming into our community. The other thing that I want to mention about plans is this is our best foot forward as of today, but like any kind of community strategic plan, it's always open for additional community input, additional strategies, additional ebb and flowing. So by adopting this plan today, that doesn't mean it's a final stamp and it's put on a shelf. It means it's an action plan in which we're continually working, adapting, and moving towards the direction that our community needs to go.
And you weren't here this morning when we discussed this item, and I asked Keely if this was, once this is published, is it done and put up on the shelf and we're finished just to be in compliance with Commerce? And that's not the case. It's still viable, it's flexible, it changes, it can be amended, additions, right?
Absolutely, yeah. From the previous time that we went through and adopted a five-year plan, and then new regulations came out, from that previous five-year plan over last year, there were a whole host of accomplishments that occurred from that plan. It also gave guidance for our local jurisdictions on how they can create their own strategies and how those can intertwine with the plan. And so we had to shift gears to create a new five-year plan. Unfortunately, Keely was hired and came on board for the county. We had to shift gears and adapt to new strategies, as well as the ones that we're working, in order to meet those goals and those federal guidelines.
Thank you. And she came from CYS, I believe. Oh, yeah.
Good people.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you very much.
Anything further for Derek?
No.
Okay. Go ahead, Keely.
Thank you, Derek. So as Derek stated, in 2018 June, you approved the five-year plan, five-year homeless housing plan, which was to run from 2017 to 2022. In December 2018, the Department of Commerce put forth new guidelines and objectives for all local communities to address in an amended or rewritten five-year plan. So I got that dubious distinction on my first day, on January 2, 2019, and the last 10 months have been spent doing copious amounts of research and joining with local jurisdictions, with, working with my team here at Public Health and Social Services. Some of the, acknowledged, some thanks need to go out to the Office of Homeless and, sorry, Housing and Homeless Prevention Staff, Director of Public Health Shelley Slaughter, Tom Webster, Nicole Boyes, Kathy Cooper, and Gary Aden. And then Pam Gant is our data analyst, who put together the formatting and all of the, did all the data analysis for the plan. Couldn't have done it without her. And then our core team comprised of Meg Martin, whom you've heard speak today, Derek Harris, whom you've heard speak today, Trish Gregory from Family Support Center, Anna Schleck from the City of Olympia, and Carrie Rutland from the City of Olympia. Four of those people were instrumental in writing the original plan, the 2017 to 2022 plan. We had multi-jurisdictional teams from Lacey, Olympia, I met with people from Yelm, citizens from Yelm. And when I met with the City of Olympia, in order to ensure that their planning process was not duplicative or did not support our five-year plan, we made a concerted effort to ensure that their planning process would support the five-year plan and not be in any way in conflict. And that is what we made sure, we ensured. We also met with law enforcement from all four jurisdictions, and their feedback was implemented. And then also I attended, in order to, again, expedite and be efficient with this process, met with and attended listening sessions with lived, people with lived experience, citizens with lived experience in our county, and went to several listening sessions with community members and their thoughts, and their ideas are reflective in this plan. The plan from Commerce states, "All local plans must be consistent with Commerce's statewide guidelines," as Derek said earlier, "and Commerce's five-year homeless strategic plan." That you will see when you read, if you were to read the local plan guidance, which is available also on our website at Public Health and Social Services, to see what those guidelines and objectives were. I believe that with all of the work that we've put in, that it does meet those five objectives, which were to quickly identify and engage all people experiencing homelessness, to prioritize housing for people with the greatest need, to operate an effective and efficient homeless crisis response system that swiftly moves people into permanent housing, and project the impact of what it's going to look like in 2024, considering that there aren't any increase in budgetary increases or legislative changes. And then to address racial disparities, which I think was a really important addition to these objectives, and that the state takes that racial disparity within populations of people experiencing homelessness very seriously. So all five of those objectives were met and addressed in our strategies in the five-year plan. And as you heard, it was taken to our local continuum of care and given thumbs up and to move forward with bringing it before adoption. Following the adoption, it will move on to the Department of Commerce. The Department of Commerce will then score it and return it with any comments or areas that we need to increase or change, that sort of thing. And as Commissioner Hutchings, you clarified, it is a living document, and we intend to keep, make it as supple as possible to address the needs that are, we're currently experiencing in our county with regards to people experiencing homelessness. So I, I hope that, if you, well, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and we can, I hope we can move forward on this adoption.
Any questions?
The five objectives that you laid out, those come from the state, correct?
Yes.
And if, if folks in the community thought those weren't the right objectives, I mean, are those being generated by Department of Commerce, or by the governor, or the state legislature? Or where would they go to say, you're leading us down the wrong path?
I would say they are coming from the Department of Commerce to all local communities. All local communities have to address these objectives by December 1. Yet, all of those objectives were influenced by the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness Strategic Plan, which is a federal plan, as well as the statewide plan, strategic plan for ending homelessness. So it's the federal, the state, and the Department of Commerce.
Okay. And then we take those objectives, and your task was to create a local set of strategies to implement those objectives that were handed to you by Department of Commerce?
That's correct.
Okay. That was my question. For Keely.
And Keely, as you well know, this is a hotly contested issue nationally, but we're looking at it here locally.
Yes.
And I hope people realize, if they don't, they should or should have already by now, realize that government is not the answer. We don't have the money, we don't have the resources, and we are not going to solve it or resolve it. We're just going to mitigate and help. But it is our responsibility to do something to mitigate and help, and along with engaging the community, wherever the community involvement comes, to engage them and help them with this issue as well. I just wanted to make that statement. Do you have anything to add to that in response, or no, you don't have to?
I think you said it well.
Thank you. So no other questions. Thank you very much. And Derek, thank you for coming in. Appreciate that. It's always good to see you. So is the motion?
Make the motion, then we can make comments at that point. At this point, I will say that I would move to adopt the Thurston County Homeless Crisis Response Plan 2019 to 2024, and submit the document to the State Department of Commerce.
I second that. So it's moved and seconded to adopt the Thurston County Homeless Crisis Response Plan. Any further discussion, then?
I would just like to comment that I want the folks who are here to know that I read all the comments that came in, including, there were two specifically from speakers today, and I read those. I asked Keely questions about them, to the extent I had questions about them. This plan is a lot better than the plan from 2018, I think. I would encourage you to compare them side to side. Now, some of those changes are because the state, you know, changed the structure, but I just think a much better job was done, and Derek and Keely, I think, described why that is. And I trust, I trust what Derek said about the process never been better, because to me, the result's never been better. I mean, I wasn't sure how a plan was going to come forward to, to do what was being purported to be done, and I understand why there'd be disappointment in what they, what the expectations might have been. It's about expectations. I was a candidate last year. I didn't know what a five-year Department of Commerce homeless plan should look like. When I got it, I probably had the same reaction that a lot of the public had. I was like, I don't see how this is going to get us there. There's a lot of, there's a lot of lists of things, and it's not clear who's going to do it, and how it's going to get paid for, and how we're going to measure it. And I think that that's probably a lot of the concern now, but I think we've taken several major steps forward to having a plan that answers those questions as best we can at this point. You know, as policymakers here, we have to rely on our local experts. The continuum of care, if you don't know what that is, I certainly didn't a year and a half ago, is a term of art, and it's something that's required for every community to have, and it's your local experts. When we talk about the homeless housing hub, that is not just the county, that is not just government. Thurston Thrives and the Homeless Housing Hub is a broad-based, community-wide effort that involves nonprofits, that involves private sector, that involves citizen input and local municipalities. And this group has worked on this collectively. This is a, this is the collective result of a lot of community-wide effort that I think Derek succinctly described. And I don't see how the expect, I mean, I don't see, sitting in my chair, how I can improve at this point on this. I think that we have to continue to work on this problem. I think people's frustration is a reflection of the complexity of the problem, and we're committed to continuing to work together, finding new strategies, finding new ways, finding new measurables. We will not hesitate, I don't believe, to incorporate any new ideas. If we learn something, a new approach, a new way to do things, let's get this and put into the plan. Happy to contemplate any of that. But sitting here today, and the effort that's been put in, and the requirements we have from the state, I'm comfortable moving forward with this plan.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded to adopt the Thurston County Homeless Crisis Response Plan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Thank you, Keely. For B, Approval of Amendment Number 10 to the Washington State Department of Health Consolidated Contract.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Shelley Slaughter, Director of Thurston County Public Health and Social Services. The Washington State Department of Health 2018 to 2020 Consolidated Contract is the mechanism used to transmit federal and state funding for public health services to the county where the services are delivered. Amendment Number 10 increases this contract by $1,256,293 for a revised maximum consideration not to exceed $3,421,489 for the duration of January 1, 2018, through December 31, 2020. This amendment occurs every two months during a three-year contract period, and in alignment with state and federal fiscal years at certain periods- And in alignment with state and federal fiscal years, at certain periods of time, you will see additional increases. And that is what you see before you today with this increase is primarily reflective of federal funds, because October is the beginning of the federal fiscal year. This amendment adds statements of work for public health emergency preparedness and response in the amount of $247,670. $2,055 in childhood-led poisoning prevention. $153,123 in foundational public health services for environmental health, disease investigation and prevention, and public health emergency preparedness. And $500,000 in federal national estuary pollution prevention identification and correction program in shellfish harvesting areas and in marine recreation areas. In addition, this amendment amends statements of work for the maternal child health block grant of $170,583. The additional statements of work include an action plan, as well as additional work for equity in that program. There's also an additional $20,000 in drinking water for Group B programs. Group A is actually a slight decrease. And finally, a $10,744 increase in tobacco and vapor product prevention and control program specific to marijuana prevention. You had asked this morning for additional information on these items, and so I hope that provides you some more information and clarifies what this funding is for. The work of these programs aligns with the Thurston County Strategic Plan Initiatives. Number one, improve health outcomes for all. Number two, improve community health, wellness, and safety. Number four, strengthen emergency management planning and community disaster preparedness. And number nine, support environmental health and climate stabilization. And if people are interested in more information about these programs, they can visit our website at Thurston County Public Health, and also find information on our social media accounts, specifically Facebook and Twitter.
You have questions?
No. Thank you for spelling that out, Shelley.
Did you spell out just 4B, or did you went to 4C as well?
I'm sorry, for, for which?
B.
That was just 4B, all of that?
Oh, yes.
Because I'm getting all the numbers, but I don't, I don't see any of the numbers in here, the amounts in here. What's the total?
So the total amount increase is the $1,256,293. So that's the increase for this amendment number 10.
Okay. Thank you. Because it kept going on, I thought, well, maybe you're spelling into, into the other one.
I just wanted to break out what, what that over a million dollars was funding and supporting.
I see it now. Thank you very much. Okay. No motion?
I move to approve amendment number 10 to the State of Washington Department of Health Consolidated Contract number CLH 18264, increasing the contract by $1,256,293 for a revised maximum consideration not to exceed $3,421,489 for the duration of January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2020. And authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to sign the amendment and any future amendments that do not revise the approved dollar amount or duration of the contract by more than 10%.
I second. So it's been moved and seconded to approve amendment number 10 to the Health Consolidated Contract. Any further discussion?
No.
Nope? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you very much.
4C is setting a public hearing. Tom Webster, Social Services Program Specialist Number Two.
Good afternoon. Tom Webster, Public Health and Social Services. I'm here to ask you to set a public hearing for November 26 at 3 o'clock to receive public comment on our 2018 HUD Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. This is an annual report that's required to HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, for our program near 2018 funds that we, federal funds we received from HUD for a community development block grant and home investment partnership program, which are affordable housing dollars. So we report on this annually. We will have a report that will be available for public comment on or about November 10. There's a 15-day public comment period, and then we will receive public comments as well at the, at the hearing. Following the hearing will be approved, and we will submit that to HUD. So we're asking for your approval to set this public hearing.
Okay. Any questions?
Nope. Very straightforward.
All right. Is there a motion?
I move to set a public hearing for November 26, 2019, at 3:00 p.m. at the Thurston County Courthouse, Building 1, Room 280, or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard, to receive public comment on the 2018 HUD Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report.
I second that. It's been moved and seconded to set a public hearing for the 2018 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for November 26, 2019, at 3:00 p.m. Any further discussion about that? Nope? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 5A is Public Works' Adoption of Amendment to Chapter 15.20, Apprentice Requirements for Public Works Projects.
You didn't call me Tim this time.
Why, no?
I was waiting for it.
Yeah, Tim.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Adam Najati, Public Works. Here to ask the Board to approve a revised ordinance, which would increase the apprentice utilization requirements from 10% to 15% of labor hours for public works projects estimated to cost $1 million or more. We held a public hearing on October 1 to consider public comments on the proposed changes, and we received no public comments on the ordinance. We did receive an internal county comment regarding the fact that there are some projects, usually federally funded, which don't allow us to set our own apprentice utilization requirement. So we added some language into the proposed ordinance, which allows us to waive the utilization requirement when we're not allowed to have one. The recommended adoption of the revised ordinance, Chapter 1520, is in alignment with the county's strategic plan and Initiative 6 to proactively shape a strong, diverse economy that provides equitable access to opportunity, and Initiative 18 to develop higher and retain a quality, stable, diverse, and thriving workforce.
Any questions? Was that he?
No.
Nope? Okay. Is there a motion?
Yes. Move to adopt an ordinance to amend Thurston County Code, Chapter 15 dot 20, apprenticeship requirements for public works projects, to increase the apprentice utilization requirement for public works projects from 10% to 15% of total labor hours.
Second. So it's moved and seconded to adopt the amendment to Chapter 15.20, apprenticeship requirements for public work projects. All in favor, is there any further discussion?
I just, this was an, this was an issue that I proposed earlier this year. I think it's important, because we have statistics showing a very, a deficit of skilled workers. Washington needs almost a million workers over the next, I think, five to 10 years to, to meet its demands for infrastructure and big, large-scale projects. This is an opportunity for us to contribute to that, especially because we have a lot of large public works projects in our future, whether it's working on the jail, or working on some modification of the courthouse. We're going to have opportunities to implement this and really enhance worker training, and it can help, you know, in a whole number of ways that I outlined back when we were debating the, the idea to begin with. So I'm excited that we're doing this and to...
And I'm glad you brought this up. Didn't know there was such a requirement, and fully support it. Thank you. So it's moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. 5B, contract award for countywide guardrails, 2019.
Good afternoon, Board of County Commissioners. My name is David Chain with the Public Works Engineering Design Team. Public Works recently solicited bids from the small works roster in order to repair and replace damaged and substandard guardrail throughout the county. We had two locations near Rochester this year. One location is 183rd Avenue between Forstrom and Moon Road. Second location is Independence Road crossing the Chehalis River. Lowest quote was received from Peterson Brothers Incorporated of Sumner, Washington in the amount of $87,264.62. Public Works staff is requesting permission to execute this contract, and if we get it executed, we plan to have the project finished by the end of the year.
Nice.
Any questions?
Questions, comments?
No. Damaged guardrails usually is an indication that they're pretty important.
Yeah.
So applaud this. I know the exact location there at the Chehalis River that you're talking about, and that's always a tricky spot. So I'll let the folks down in Rochester know that they should expect that by the end of the year.
All right. Thank you.
Pretty quick turnaround. Is there a motion?
Yes. I would move to award the contract for construction of the countywide guardrail 2019 Phase 1 project to Peterson Brothers, Inc. of Sumner, Washington, in the amount of $87,264.62, and authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the contract and any change orders for this project due to unforeseen conditions only, not for changes in scope, up to 10% of the contract, which would amount to $8,726.46, or an aggregate of $95,991.8.
I second that. So it's been moved and seconded to award the contract for countywide guardrails for 2019 Phase 1. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. 5C, contract award for Mullen Road in Lacey and Carpenter.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Matt Unsmann, Thurston County Public Works. On October 2, Public Works received and opened 13 bids in response to a call for sealed bids for the Mullen Road project that extends from just east of Timberline High School to east of Carpenter Road. Low bid was from Active Construction Incorporated from Pialup, Washington, with a bid amount Staff has reviewed those bids and has determined that the, the lowest responsive bidder is, is Active Construction, and we're requesting permission from the Board of County Commissioners today to award the contract to Active Construction. Construction contract costs will be paid for using a combination of sources, including $2 million from the Federal Surface Transportation Program, 4.2 million from the State's Transportation Improvement Board, 4.2, I'm sorry, City of Lacey is contributing in excess of $2 million for the water and sewer utilities, and then the county is responsible for $1.2 million. So the project includes a mile of roadway reconstruction. The improvements are all geared at improving the safety and mobility for all roadway users, drivers, pedestrians, and bicyclists. Some of the improvements include installation of roundabout at Mullen Road and Carpenter Road. We're installing bike lanes and sidewalks throughout the whole mile-long length of the project. We're installing street lighting. Construction's expected to begin towards the end of this year or the beginning of next year. Construction could take up to two years, and that's because of a lot of complexities, including close to 10 private utilities that have to get relocated before we can begin our work. We have more than 10,000 vehicles per day that are using this two-lane roadway. We have a very limited right-of-way, making it a tight space for the contractor to work. And we're, we want to be upfront, make sure that the public recognizes that during construction, during the day, when the contractor's out there, it's going to be one lane of alternating traffic. I saw that look. For more information, we're encouraging the public to visit our, our project webpage on the Public Works webpage. We're also encouraging them to review that site for project updates during construction, and to sign up for our Twitter, Twitter feed for project updates on a daily basis as well. So at this point, happy to answer any questions.
Now, we've gone through this project a few times. This is kind of the last piece of it, but the, I know you guys have been very diligent of working with the community, letting people know. Intercity transit is on board. I sit on their board, and I know for a fact that you guys have been working with them and trying to minimize impact to our commuters and our public transit users. And you had a lot of innovative ideas for public outreach that I appreciate. So hopefully, we can minimize the, it's going to, there's no way it's not going to be frustrating, but hopefully, we've done our best to minimize that. So, thank you.
There's a ton of residences out there, as well, you well know. But also, the roundabout will have to be fair enough sized to accommodate IT, but school buses, because there's a school just up
Absolutely.
half a block up the road. That's going to be a pain in the neck for the parents or caretaker for getting kids to and from. So I'm glad you'll be, well, we'll be taking the calls on that too, probably. But I just hope people can bear with us and be patient for those two years. But thank you, Matt.
Thank you. I would move to award the contract for the Mullen Road Southeast project between Lacey City Limits and Carpenter Road to Active Construction, Inc., for a total amount of $9,467,467.1, and authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the contract and any change orders for the project due to unforeseen conditions only, not for changes in scope, up to 10% of the contract, which would amount to $946,747, or an aggregate of $10,414,214.
I second that. It's been moved and seconded to award the contract for the Mullen and Carpenter-Lacy project. Any further discussion?
No.
Nope? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Matt, very much. Agenda item number six, county manager. Oh, that's us again. That always throws me, county manager. We discussed our report back on our, our week activities. Go ahead.
Sure. I'll go quickly. I know we're delayed on a public hearing. It was a busy week for me on community events beyond my board assignments. Tuesday, I attended an art reception at the Family and Juvenile Court. They, they have local youth in different programs who contribute art to the courthouse, which is really a nice thing to do. Folks in that situation are, you know, in a, usually not in the best frame of mind, and the, the artwork, both professionals and kids, artwork is displayed, and they had an art reception for the two artists, and that was nice. On Wednesday, I attended a ceremony for, it's called a Bucky Award, given by Passato's Safe Haven for excellence in prosecuting and investigating animal cruelty cases. And one of our local animal control officers won it for this, it's a statewide, but she won it for the second year in a row, Erica Johnson, and our local prosecutor, Brandy Archer. They worked together on a very difficult animal cruelty case, and they were awarded. And it comes with some money that they can use on training for officers, which is great. Wednesday, attended with Commissioner Hutchings the Behavioral Health Organization Integration Forum. Massive changes coming to behavioral health, and we're out there trying to bring together the stakeholders and talk to the community about what the changes look like, and so that was a useful event. There's, there was one in Shelton and a couple others. Thursday, attended the grand opening of the Merritt Manor Project, Affordable Housing, something we desperately need in this community, as we've heard many times over this afternoon. That's an 84 unit, I want to say, a project that should be a real boon to the community right in the heart of what, what we're most desirous of at this point. Thursday, I also attended, I spoke to a community group called Olympia Indivisible about what's going on with the county. On Saturday, I attended the League of Women Voters Education Fund Luncheon. On Monday, yesterday, I was out tree planting with children from McLean Elementary School, fourth graders. We were out planting oaks, along with the Conservation District and Thurston County Public Works staff, including Steve Johnson and Trevin and Jeannie Kenny, Marcus, one of our new public work staff, I don't know his last name, but anyway, a great crew out there helping the kids put oak trees in the ground. And then this morning, attended Family Support Center's annual Fall Breakfast fundraiser for that important organization.
You've been busy.
Yeah.
I, I attended the Thurston County Economic Development Council's meeting, and also attended with Commissioner Mensah, the Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Organization, HCA, the Health Care Act, the state advocacy forum. We both sit on the TM VHO, Behavioral Health Organization Committee as Chair, or as Council Commissioners. And it was full of service providers and community resources, a very well-attended event out at the hub. I also attended the Merritt Manor Affordable Housing Grand Opening out on Martin Way, formerly Bailey's Motor Inn. And what a great, outstanding change is that, to see that there standing, and it's an excellent example of philanthropy in our, in our community. Excellent example. And you can ask anybody there, they will tell you the story. I attended the annual education fund luncheon for the League of Women Voters at, on Saturday at the Indian Summer, and that place was packed, and very good speakers, and it was really, really a cool event. Very cool event, loaded. And then I attended, yesterday afternoon, the Partners Action Team. Part of initiative of Thurston Thrives is a, a group called Partners. Now, it's parents, it's parents and children and education, and it was... Now, it's parents -- it's parents and children and education, and it was -- we had our county epidemiologist
Mary Ann?
Yeah, Mary Ann Agaro speak along with Scott Hanauer, formerly the CEO of Behavioral Health -- I'm sorry, formerly Community Services. And now he's with family
Family Education.
Family Education, yes. He's mainly a mover and shaker. Both are excellent speakers on resiliency, the health of the county when it comes to youth, and how to build resiliency in kids. Very fascinating. Again, that was even a well-attended at 3:00 in the afternoon on a beautiful sunny day meeting. Very informative. So that was the extent of my week. So now I'm returning to the County Manager.
Thank you, Commissioners. Let me walk you through your combined schedule for the upcoming week, where at least two Commissioners will be present. You may have individual appointments on your individual calendars. Those will not be part of my report. Following this meeting, you will have a public hearing related to proposed changes to County Code 2.118.080. Wednesday, October 30th, at 1:00 in the -- 1:30 in the afternoon, you have a briefing related to vaping and vapor products and uses in public places. At 2:30 in the afternoon, you have a briefing related to the winter preparations, where Public Works and emergency services will give you a perspective on their efforts. 3:30 in the afternoon, you have a follow-up meeting related to the Flex Unit Project. Thursday, October 31st, 9:00 in the morning, you have a follow-up briefing related to the comprehensive plan, periodic update. 10:00 in the morning on Thursday, October 31st, you have your Commissioners check-in. An agenda will be placed, posted 24 hours in advance. Nothing on your combined schedule on Friday, November 1st. Nothing on your combined schedule on Monday, November 4th, and on Tuesday, November 5th, you will be coming back here in this room. At 9:00 in the morning, will you be reviewing the agenda for the afternoon's board meeting? That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to back up and add one more thing that I attended this last Sunday. A few weeks ago, our Coroner, Gary Warnock, told us of the indigent and unclaimed, or indigent, unclaimed, and unwanted individuals that have died in our community, and they're cremated. And Interfaith Works puts together a ceremony, a service for them, that held at Mills and Mills on Little Rock Road across from Costco. And so I attended this last Sunday, attended that event, or that service, not event, but a service, and it was very solemn. There was 41 folks that are indigent, unclaimed, or unwanted, to include an infant that was left at the hospital, one day old. Just kind of heartbreaking that there's people out there that don't have anybody that want them, or they're discarded. The ashes are even discarded. We heard that story from the Coroner. But boy, that was a very, very moving and very touching event to see that, and I was surprised, too, that it was well-attended. There's a lot of people that care. So I just wanted to share that. So we're done with the BOCC meeting, so we're going to move right into the public hearing right now. Is that right with you, County Manager? Is that right with you, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay. This is a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance relating to Thurston County Citizens' Salary Commission. The purpose is Thurston County is seeking public input on amending Thurston County Code, Section 2.118.080, relating to the Thurston County Citizens' Commission on Salaries for Elected Officials. There's a sign-up sheet in the back of the room, and if you want to testify, just add your name, and I'll call you up, and you're ready -- I mean, you're -- obviously, you can testify. You'll be awarded three minutes, and the timer's up on the board, and Labunida Bomar, our clerk, will -- has the remote, and at the end of three minutes, your time will expire, and you'll hear a ding, and we know you're done. And with that, I'm opening up this public hearing. And now we're going to have a staff presentation by, I think, Juan Merro Chavez, County Manager.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioners. RCW 36.17024 establishes the authority in accordance for a county to create a salary commission. Thurston County Code, Chapter 2.118, sets forth the rules and regulations for which the Thurston County Citizens' Commission on Salaries for Elected Officials pursuant to the provisions of the state law. RCW, is that okay, the volume? Okay. RCW 3617024 establishes the authority and requirements for a county to establish a salary commission. Thurston County Code, Chapter 2.118, sets forth the rules and regulations for the Thurston County Citizens' Commission on Salaries and Elected Officials pursuant to the provisions of state law. Thurston County Code, Section 2.118.080, requires an affirmative vote of not less than six members of the Salary Commission to take a final action to set a recommendation on any salary, but this requirement is not mandated by the state law. So the proposed changes before you, it will be under Thurston County Code 2.118.080 titled Rules and Regulations. Under Item A, the proposal strikes the reference to RCW 42.42 and replaces with RCW 42.30035. That is alignment with the new changes on the state law. Item B of the same rules and regulations eliminates the following sentences. Provides, however, the final section to set or recommends any salary pursuant to Section 2.118.020 shall require an affirmative vote for not less than six members. So that is eliminated. So the new Section B reads as follows. "A majority of the appointed members shall constitute a quorum for the purpose of conducting meetings. To take action at a meeting, an affirmative vote of a majority of those present is required." Period. And those are the proposed changes before you.
Any questions? Preliminary questions? You want to wait till after? Clarification?
I think I'll wait.
Okay.
I'm good.
Excuse me. So I'm going to ask the public, who is -- those that have signed up, to come up and testify, and the first one is John Pettit.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is John Pettit. I'm from the East Olympia area. I'm making a little bit of a comment on behalf of another person that asked me to say it since he needed to leave. He says he was probably being inclined to think that if you decided you wanted to reduce the number down to seven, with a majority of five required to vote in favor, that would be more satisfactory than just a simple majority of a quorum. That would -- a quorum would be four, and a simple majority would be three, so then you'd be less than half the number of people on a committee. With that, I've shared his particular viewpoint. I've also had some recent discussion with a number of other people, and I actually know some people that'd probably be interested in perhaps being on the committee, since you're in need of some, but all of them seem to have something pretty much in common. They're all thinking maybe Commissioners should be paid more in line with what the average salary is of the average person that works and resides here in Thurston County. So instead of being paid like $120,000 a year, maybe the average -- they would recommend something more in the category of maybe $60,000 a year. Now, I know that kind of bothersome to think that someone might not think that you are worthy of what you may feel you're worthy of, but on the other hand, it's not an uncommon process for churches to find and pay their ministers accordingly, so that way you are truly in touch with what the actual situation is for the people that you represent. I realize there's other issues. Some talk about courthouse issues and extra tax levies. It helps give perspective about the impact of what all of these different issues and how they directly affect, you know, the citizens by being more in line with what they actually make. And I realize that under your current rules, you have the ability to listen and take in the information, and then you can go and reject it, which more than likely you would if somebody said your wage should be half what it is. But I do think that perhaps one needs to understand, there was a time when Commissioners actually acted as their own executives. They actually did all the work, and now they basically piecemeal it out to county managers to be out there actually digging in and doing the work, gathering the information, providing them alternatives A, B, and C, and you sit back and, oh, I like this, I don't like that. Well, I think that I'm seeing a general move in the citizen re that says, we want more. We want people to actually know and actually feel exactly where we are. So I'm going to recommend these people that they can sign on. I hope there's not a criteria that you have to promise you want to raise our wages more. I'm thinking that's like way out of bounds already. I would suggest put a lock on wages for maybe five years. That should help. Thanks.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the Board on this issue? Anyone? Anyone? Okay. All right. Any questions or comments?
You know, I don't know. Usually, we can act or we can defer action. You know, frankly, I'd like to get Commissioner Edwards' input on this. I'd like to kind of bounce around different possibilities. As I said this morning, I didn't realize, I'm comfortable with reducing the number of people required to act. I'm less comfortable with changing a supermajority to a simple majority. You know, possibly we could reduce the number of -- we could reduce the number required to act, get rid of that six, but then still have to be 60% of whatever that is. That way, we preserve the supermajority concept, but we don't hamstring the body if people don't show up, or we couldn't appoint enough people, which is the situation we're trying to manage. So I think there's two or three possibilities that we should discuss as a full Board.
Yeah. So we'll just -- you want to close the meeting?
My motion is to close the public hearing and defer this till next week.
Okay. It's been -- well, I second that. So it's been moved to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Nope. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned, and the meeting is closed.